Welcome to another broadcast of the Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorraine County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Elaria. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend.
Stand to pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Somebody was sitting in my chair.
Madam Clerk, under appointments, at 10 o'clock, there will be a public hearing on the CDBG amendments given by Kelly Gillan, Assistant Director of the Lorraine County Community Development Department, and at 10:15, William Glowacki, the Administrator of Lorraine County Golden Acres, will update the Board on the home. Under Resolutions, Job and Family Services Bills?
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Investments?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Appropriations?
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Requisitions?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Travel expenses?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Travel expenses?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Bills?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Authorized various personnel actions as indicated on the summary for employees within jurisdiction of Lorraine County Board of Commissioners?
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Under the airport, approve an entry into leasing room between Lorraine County Board of Commissioners and the airport authority for a space at the building as an agreement associated with the transfer of the FBO effective October 1st, 2003, at cost $1 per year.
As my understanding, this is a five-year contract with an option to renew, five years. Total 10. So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Under the auditor, approve an entry into a two-year sublease agreement on behalf of Lorraine County Auditor with Lorraine National Bank for office space of approximately 1,100 square feet located at 124 Middle Avenue, Elaria, Ohio. This agreement is effective October 1st, 2003, expires September 30th, 2005, at a cost of $10,450 annually, based on a rental rate of $9.50 per square feet payable monthly in the amount of $870.83 and paid from account 215010301451201, Real Estate Assessment Building, right?
Linda Keys is here. Linda, would you like to comment on this?
Good morning.
Good morning, Linda.
We're renewing a two-year lease that we currently have. It expires at the end of the month, and we have our new construction office over there. We brought in-house four contracts that we had previously outsourced. We had no room to put these employees, so we leased the bank building.
I understand there's seven employees over there.
Correct.
Linda, my only question, and I asked Craig this earlier, but when the Justice Center is complete, we can bring these people in this building because we will have additional space. But the Justice Center will be complete in a year, and I'm just wondering if you could go back and negotiate this lease for a one-year lease?
There's a possibility of having a one-year lease, although Lorraine National Bank indicated they wanted to expand where we're currently existing into a trust department, and if we allow just a one-year lease, then we would absolutely have to be out in one year. And if, for whatever reason, the Justice Center might take a little longer than that, we hope not, but...
Well, it's on schedule as far as it goes right now unless there's some major catastrophe, but...
I mean, that's a possibility. I just don't want to have to vacate after one year and have no place to go.
Yeah, it's understandable. Craig, did you want to comment?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Craig.
I guess my one question would be, and has there been some discussions concerning the space or additional space once this building is vacated by the various offices? Going to the Justice Center, will we be receiving some additional space in the Auditor's Office?
I'm sure there's going to be enough space. We'll have the whole 5th floor available.
Because we're not really aware of any possible movements from our department. I do know some other counties. In fact, Butler County recently, when they built their new administration or Justice Center or Administration Building, many of the offices moved over to the new one. However, then the Auditor's Office split into two floors, the real estate side being one floor and then the accounting side of it being another floor. That would be nice to see, but again, we're not aware of any discussions as to where we might be located if there is going to be some space made available to us. But I think again, as Linda had mentioned, the indications from Lorraine National Bank Group is that they will be expanding that area, and we're kind of locked in. If we go to a year, we're out. Two years, we're safe, and then that'll give everybody an opportunity to settle in at the Justice Center, and then things can be decided upon.
Plus, it'll take time to remodel and do all that work anyways. I don't see why two years isn't appropriate, so...
Okay, what is the desire of the Board?
So moved. About the two-year lease?
Ready? You can second the motion. No, what is your desire? I mean, do you want to hold this and see if they can negotiate for a year and... Is that what you're suggesting? Well, I would like to see if they can negotiate this for a year with maybe an extension of a month-to-month until either the Justice Center is complete or we find other space.
I'm wishing I had for lack of a second.
It didn't yet. You still got better there. But I mean, I know we're going to have additional space. We've got this space over here by the train depot. Well, let's do this since there seems to be some question about it. We can hold this until next week. It doesn't expire until the 30th. Right. Okay? So I would just suggest that we carry this forward and answer the questions that we may have and... Linda, will you? I'm sorry? Do you have a problem with that, Craig?
I do believe that has been addressed with Jay Tokar, who actually rents out the space there at Lorraine National Bank, and we are going to be out within a year. Month-to-month, from what I understand, is not going to be feasible on their behalf. They have to plan out their business strategy, and that's what they're looking at. We have a year, we're out, then they're going to expand their trust area. So at this point, if we're locked in at two years, then they can plan their business practice, we can plan ours, and also give the county ability to kind of decide where this, you know, who's going to use the new space.
And that makes sense. You also brought forth the question about what are the plans for additional space in this building for the Auditor's Department, and I think that there ought to be some kind of a preliminary answer to you to that question before we proceed with this request. So I'm not sure that we can do that all next week, but I think that we can have the week to work on it. Fair enough?
All right.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Under Chown Services, authorize various addition deletions of personnel in Lorraine County Chown Services Department to utilize their Shell Oil-Gasoline Credit Card in the amount not to exceed $200 and the agency's MasterCard not to exceed $2,500 for the year 2003.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Under the Commissioners, authorize the release of retainage to Pump Free Roofing, Inc., Elaria, Ohio, for the work performed on the Engineers Building, Health Department, and Juvenile Facility in the total amount of $21,840. All projects have been completed and necessary work has been received.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Under the Community Development Department, award a change order in the amount of $1,550.62 to Birch Building Company, Lorraine, Ohio, for additional emergency home repair assistance for roof repairs to Juanita Cooper, 38175 Chestnut Ridge Road in Township. The original work was approved by Resolution Number 03603 and will be paid from 2002, CDBG Formula Activities Account Number 126022501450422. This change order is required due to the presence of black mullet in the plywood, which is affecting the homeowner's health.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Instruct the clerk to advertise for bids for the City of Sheffield Lake Community Center Kitchen renovation in Sheffield Lake, Ohio. The estimate cost of this project is $40,000, and a mandatory pre-bid conference and walk-through will be held at the City of Sheffield Lake Community Center, 4575 Lake Road, Sheffield Lake, at 10:00 a.m. on Friday, October 3, 2003. This notice will be published in the Chronicle Telegram of September 19th and 26th, and bids will be open on Friday, October 10th, at 2:00 p.m. in the Commissioners' Public Hearing Room.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Under Job and Family Services, approve an entry into contract between Lorraine County Department of Job and Family Services and Child Grafton Inc., Grafton, Ohio, for child daycare services. This contract is effective October 1st, 2003 through December 31st, 2003, and the maximum amount reimbursed for childhood role in childcare centers is based on state reimbursement ceilings. These ceilings are set for the age of the child and the amount of time the child attends the center.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Adopt the Statement of Policies for Lorraine County Department of Job and Family Services Prevention, Retention, Contingency Program. The biennial budget bill, House Bill 95, enacted changes in the PRC Plan Process and significant changes in Chapter 5108 stating the Board of Commissioners must certify the County Department of Job and Family Services as complied in the Statement of Policies.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Amend Resolution Number 03466, adopt on June 19, 2003, Part IV, which is Horizon Activity Center, North Olmsted, Ohio, in the amount, this agreement is in the amount of not to exceed $80,000. This agreement was for 693 TANF children in summer camp. Amendment is to reflect a weak extension of the contract from August 15th to August 22nd, 2003.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Authorize purchase of health and safety training using Lorraine County Department of Job and Family Services childcare quality funds in the amount of $5,170 for the period of September 25th, 2003 through June 30th, 2004. Authorize Mayor Lou Golsky, Director, to execute contract on behalf of the Commissioners as needed with prosecutor's approval as to form...
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Under the Engineers, award contract to Coasing Construction Company, Frederictown, Ohio, in the amount of $958,224.74 for the resurfacing of Middle Ridge Road. Four bids were received, this being the most responsive with Engineers' estimate of The funding will be 80% federal CSTP funds and 20% WPC. An award is contingent on approval of the OWC, excuse me, OPWC request to proceed. Issue a notice to proceed letter effective honor before May 1st, 2004, and to complete honor before October 31st, 2004. Authorize County Administrator to notify County Auditor to release retainage of the installation of project.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Under the Prosecutor, approve Lorraine County Prosecutor's request to designate Marnich Evil Jr., victim-witness administrator, to sign the Ohio Criminal Justice Service Quarterly Subgrant Reports.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Under the Sheriff, receive and file the annual report submitted by Lorraine County Sheriff's Office of all fines and costs collected by Sheriff's Office pursuant to ORC 311.16 for the next, for the year next preceding September 1st, 2003, in the amount of $143.8.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mr. Ropelcy?
No report.
There is no prosecutor? Commissioners' report?
Commissioner Blair? I have no report this morning, thank you. I'm Asher.
Mr. Moore?
None.
I don't have a report, but I do have a comment. The Chronicle Telegram reported that I should discourage my son from speaking at a Commissioners' meeting. I thought this was still America, where there was freedom of speech. The same editor uses his column and the right to freedom of speech, but says that my son should not exercise his right. As most people know, I've never stopped anyone from speaking at a meeting, and I never will intend to at any time. The newspapers play a big part in the way that people in Lorraine County feel about the county they live in, as well as it either being a depressed county or an upbeat county. And I think that the newspapers should realize that and change their attitudes. And I would say shame on the Chronicle for even suggesting that I would violate an American's right to freedom of speech. Allowing a citizen to participate is the American way, and that's the American system. So I hope he views this TV meeting, and I don't know if it was Andy Young or what editor it was that wrote that, but they should realize that freedom of speech still lives in the United States of America, and that's how they make their money. And that's the only comment I have today. Thanks.
Is there any old business?
None.
I have none. Any new business?
None.
I don't know what's noted. Board of Commissioners will meet next Thursday, September 25th, at 7:00 p.m. at Cormick Middle School, 201 South Main Street, Wellington. Therefore, no meeting will be held that day. Board correspondents?
I will be ready to be waived.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Public comment?
Is there anyone here wishing to address the Board? Elizabeth Rumix, are you in my CS, Oberlin? This is just a curiosity question, as so many of mine often are. Apropos of Number 10, is the county simply reserving space on the assumption it sometimes wants to use it there, or is there some other purpose for the space at a building being leased?
There's another space, there's another reason, and we can share that with you after the cameras are off. And/or if you can talk, you can talk to the man that just walked in about wine, okay? No?
No, absolutely not.
Anybody else?
My name is Robert Kish. I live in Elaria, Ohio. As an aside, before I speak, I'd like to remind you what I reminded once before. Read of the press is guaranteed only to those who own a press. I don't own one. Therefore, I am here because the press refused some of my letters and some of the letters I had written, they deleted so horribly I couldn't even recognize them. Freedom of the press. It said, somebody said once, "Do not go gently into the night. Rage, rage against the darkness." And that's about why I'm here. And darkness includes the sun shine law. Things have occurred, they're still not painted green, I doubt if it ever will be, behind the green door. But I am a little concerned about another event that the newspapers did not cover. I was at this meeting at this podium after they had a discussion up there about how they were going to dispose of the 10 medium-sized bells. And one person had purchased a bell for $180, and when the discussion progressed, he proposed giving one to me, and I thought, "Well, I'll accept it." But I said, "If I don't get the bell, I am willing to buy one." Therefore, it was with great pleasure that I was at the county fair when they auctioned off the first bell. I said, "Oh, I will get a chance." I went up to $200. I did not top the $1,000 mark, I'm sorry to say. But I thought, "What a great way to earn funds for the county, for the county to auction off some of these things at the public, and it should have been published so that others, other than those only attending the fair, could possibly bid it up to $10,000 if they had really deep pockets." I don't know, I have no idea. But my thought was, "I will then bid on number 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, and if need be, bell 10." I have but one question. Where the decision was made, because after the meeting where I had offered to bid on the bells, I heard no discussion that they were going to have an auction, or how the bells would be disposed of. So I guess you might say, "Would you please ring my bell?" Just trying to shed a little light.
The bell that was auctioned at the fair was not one of the 10.
Well, and what happened to the 10?
No, it was one of the 10. It just said...
No, it wasn't. Didn't have Lorraine County on it.
It didn't?
The 10 have Lorraine County on them. One, I believe, one that Mr. Moore had is at the Historical Society. Did you send yours there? We gave, no, Mary Jo, we gave that day, we gave one of the 10 to the Historical Society. Bill Burr was there. Right, that was done at the fair. That was one that Dave Moore had. No, I don't believe so. It was... Where did it come from? Well, it was one of the 10. I'm not sure off the top of my head. I think it was number four, but it was brought to the fair that day in case we wanted to distribute them. And did it have Lorraine County on it? I didn't think that that one had Lorraine County. The 10 had Lorraine County on the bell. That one didn't. I didn't look at it. All I know is that, I think it was number four, and we gave it to the Historical Society during the celebration. Okay, one went to the Historical Society. One is out here. I had it encased, and you can see it as you come into the Commissioners' office. There's the large bell and the small bell and information. We may even have the stone in there. I don't remember if we did. Not in the one in the front. Very nice display, too. It is. Our maintenance guys did it. Terrific job. Then I have another one in the office, and I'd like to have anyone come in and see that. It's beautiful. It's in the case also. And I have a stone, part of the casting, enclosed in that. And I don't really think we've decided on what we're doing with the others.
I'll still bid on one if we have an auction, and the money to go to the county.
What concern?
Very good.
Because we're short on bussing now.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to address the Board? Okay, it's now 10 o'clock. Who do we have on here?
We have the public hearing for the CDBG amendments.
Okay, I guess you're on, Ron.
Kelly.
Kelly?
Ron and Kelly.
Ron and Kelly. Good morning, Kelly.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. This is the amendment hearing for CDBG fiscal 2002. We are here to conduct the second of two required public hearings to inform the public of an amendment to the grant agreement approved September of 2002, and take comments regarding this amendment and to answer any questions regarding this amendment. The purposes of the hearing is to provide information on the State of Ohio's FY 2002 Community Development Block Grant Program and the amendments we are requesting for this application. In addition, the county held the first public hearing for this grant in February of 2002 to explain the CDBG guidelines to persons, organizations, and officials throughout the county, and to establish what needs exist in our communities that can be resolved through CDBG funds. In June of 2002, the second public hearing was held to inform the public what specific projects would be submitted to the State of Ohio for the CDBG formula application. Amendment is as follows. Project Number 4, Water and Sewer Facilities, which are specifically for the City of Amherst, Amherst Township Sewer Connections. The grant amount originally was $70,000. We would like to amend it by, reduce it by $30,000. The new balance would be $40,000. Activity Number 12, Home Repair. The original grant amount was $36,000. We would like to increase it by $30,000. The new balance would be $66,000. The Lorraine County Community Development Department has increased the awareness of the availability of funds for the home repair activity, which has in turn increased the number of requests from Lorraine County residents for assistance. In addition, the department continues to receive favorable bidders who are willing to do this type of work at reasonable cost in a timely manner. The purpose of the home repair activity is to assist owner-occupied residents with emergency-related repairs to their homes, specifically leaking roofs, furnace replacement, foundation repairs, ADA accessibility, weatherization, septic system replacements, et cetera. We have provided assistance to nine households during this grant period, which is a total of 23 occupants. And total dollar amount spent for these repairs to date is $30,303.87. The previous fiscal year, we assisted 27 households, which is 62 occupants, for a total of $103,407. And that is attached, a detailed attachment is attached to the public hearing. In previous years, Lorraine County has spent over $1.2 million in various fiscal years for home repair activities since fiscal 1998. As with last year, there is a waiting list of more than seven homes needing assistance with these funds. This amendment will benefit those persons who are currently on the Lorraine County Community Development's waiting list. In addition, I'd like to say that because of the water and sewer facility activity is for Amherst, Amherst City applicants, we've only assisted, we've assisted seven households so far, but we have no one currently waiting for that funding, because most of those people are not in that, they don't fit the criteria. So we have more of a need in the home repair activity than we do in the water and sewer So we have more of a need in the home repair activity than we do in the water and sewer facility.
So what are you doing with that money? You transferring the sewer money over to the home assistance?
But the other thing I'd like to say, too, even though we're transferring that money into the home repair activity, if we do get an increased demand in, for the sewer tie-ins in that area, we can still help those people in the home repair activity.
Would you repeat that? Would that, would those sewer issues come under home repairs?
Yeah, they can. But that, it would allow us to help people with sewer connections countywide versus just specifically in Amherst City or Amherst Township.
And when will a new round of money be available?
I can't, I couldn't hear because of sirens, I'm sorry.
I said, "When will a new round of money be available?"
We just got approved for chip monies as of September the second, and that's an additional seventy-eight thousand. We also are still, we're still waiting for that grant agreement to actually come, and we're also going to have an additional thirty-six thousand, six hundred dollars in home repair for our new Formula Application. And we're still waiting for that grant, grant agreement to come as well from the State of Ohio. And I think it's a total of like a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars in home repair act, money.
Okay, Kelly, the other night at the public hearing for the sewer issue in Eaton Township, you said that you tried to get some funding for people for sewers in that area?
Yes.
But there wasn't, the number of people or residents wasn't sufficient to be able to apply for this money? Now can you use some of this money to assist those people?
Yes, if they meet the income guidelines, we can.
Okay, and we don't have to meet the number of people? The number of households or however you're doing that?
Because that was a different pot of money. That was actually water and sewer money that was coming from a different pot of money from the State of Ohio.
Okay, so there will be some money available in here to assist them?
Yes.
And then maybe by next year, this, this, there will be more funds available in this area?
Yeah, because then we'll apply for the CDBG FY two thousand and four money.
Well, so that's good to know. So there is some assistance for some of the people out there.
Yeah, there'll still be some assistance available.
And another question I have, when we assist with home repair, do those people at any time have to repay that? When the house is sold or whatever?
Okay, with this, for FY two thousand, no, but with the new chip funding and with the new CDBG FY two thousand and three, depending on where their income falls, they'll either get a grant or a loan. If it's sixty-one percent below HUD income guidelines, they will get a grant. If they're sixty, sixty-one percent and above, then they'll have to pay a loan, but if they stay in the house for five years, it's a forgivable loan.
Okay, is that determined by the state, or is it a regulation that the county would put on?
It's the state. And so if they only stay in the house like for a year, there's a certain percentage that they would have to pay back to us, and it just keeps going on. But if they stay in there for that complete five years, then they don't have to pay anything back at all.
And that's state regulation? Because I know of, of a person, that, an elderly person, that received funding, but they're in the city of Alaria? And the person is like eighty-seven years old, and, and they're required to pay this back after they sell the house, and they've had this repaired done maybe nine, ten years ago.
Was this a, a home repair, or was it for rehab?
Home repair.
Because the rehab program, what we do is it, they don't pay any money back, it's zero percent deferred, but however much money they borrow, if it's twenty thousand dollars, and if they move, if they stay in the house for twenty years and then they sell or transfer, they still have to pay us back that twenty thousand dollars.
So it depends on how they determine if it's a home repair, or what else did you call it?
A, a home, a home repair or rehab.
Home repair or rehab.
And I bet that was a rehab that they had with the city of Alaria, and that's why they had to pay that money back.
Okay, yeah, because the person's constantly questioning me on that, and I just wanted to verify it.
Because our programs are real similar.
Okay, thank you. Any, anyone else have any questions for Kelly or Ron?
Seeing none, it's appropriate for us to pass a resolution approving.
Yes.
Close the public hearing and then.
You want two separate motions?
You can do it in one motion, or you can do it separate.
All right. I move that the hearing be closed, and that the amendment being requested be approved.
Second.
Further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, ten fifteen. Bill, are you prepared? It's ten after, but if you're... Okay. Yes. Bill Glowacki, the Administrator of Lorraine County Golden Acres Nursing Home. Give us an update.
As Ms. Vacy said, I'm Bill Glowacki, the Administrator of Golden Acres Nursing Home. For those who don't know, we're located at the corner of Route fifty-eight, North Ridge Road in Amherst. We're a Medicaid-certified facility, we have eighty-two beds certified from Medicaid, sixty-two are nursing beds, and twenty are an Alzheimer's unit. We provide full nursing service around the clock, and we also provide meals, housekeeping, laundry, and maintenance, so that people are taken care of through the whole, the whole gamut. We have contracts with physicians, a pharmacy, and a dietitian to, to ensure proper nutrition and medical care provided to the residents. We're surveyed annually by the depart, the Ohio Department of Health to ensure compliance with all the Medicaid rules and regulations. They, they survey us once a year, and they, they always arrive unannounced, and they spend about three or four days in the facility, and they go through everything that we do to make sure that we're in compliance with all the, all the rules. They usually, even though they come unannounced, they usually come in the fall, so we're expecting them in the next several weeks to, to show up for this year's survey. Our funding comes strictly from private pay patients and the Medicaid program, and there is a grant that was established by Curtis and Jesse Spence, that we receive the income from that grant every year, that amounts to about eight to ten thousand dollars a year, and that's administered by the Community Foundation of Greater Lorraine County. Our employees at Golden Acres are represented by the Teamsters Union Local Forty Thirty-Six. We're currently in the last year of our contract with them, so we'll be negotiating. In fact, I think we have a meeting October first set up with the union representative and Mr. Cortez to start that process. We also, out at Golden Acres, we house a nine-one-one backup facility in one of our buildings, and we work with Lorraine County J V S. We provide a clinical setting for their nurse aid training program. When they have to do the hand, the hands-on part of their, their program, we provide, they come out to our facility and work with our nurses and our nurses aides to get that experience. Starting January first, we're going to be working with the Amherst Township Senior Services Program to provide lunch meals for shut-ins in Amherst Township. And we haven't got all the details worked on and out, we just started talking with them, but they are interested in having us do that. And it'll just be lunch meals for seniors that are shut-in. And the last thing, we just, recently a contract was awarded to Cozing to put additional parking in at the facility, and they should be starting that up in the next couple of weeks also. And I've got some, some brochures here, and a little bit of the history of Golden Acres that I'll leave here if anyone's interested.
Bill, do we still have a waiting list out there? I know I've heard in the past that.
No, the wait, we don't have a waiting list anymore. We do have a few empty beds, and it's the whole nursing home thing right now, all the nursing homes are, are kind of down on residents right now.
You feel that's because of the economy?
Well, partly the economy, there's a lot of assisted living places that are, you know, taking a lot of the people that would come into ours. What we're seeing is people coming in that need more help with daily living activities and things like that. It's starting to turn around a little bit. We've been getting a lot more inquiries lately, so we're expecting it in the next few months to pick up quite a bit.
Okay, and, and I'm sure you welcome people to come in and tour the building.
Oh, yeah, anytime. They're always welcome.
Any questions?
No, thank you. That was a nice update. Nice to see you this morning, Bill. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Okay, I believe that's it. Anything else? And I will, second.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Adjourned.
Thank you.
Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at nine thirty at the Lorraine County Administration Building, two twenty-six Middle Avenue, fourth floor, downtown Alaria. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend.